It's six thirty, October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. This is a regular scheduled meeting of the Girdon School District Board of Directors. We'll now call the meeting to order. Madam Secretary, can you establish that we have a quorum present? With a quorum present, we're able to conduct business. Uh, Casey, could you lead us? Ah, yeah, good idea, good idea. Could you lead us in a word of prayer?
Sure. Your heavenly Father, we thank you for each and every one that's present in this room, for their care and concern for the kids in our community. We pray that you would bless this board meeting, that all decisions that are made would be done in a way that's pleasing to you, guide and direct our conversations. It's in the name of Jesus we pray, we all say.
Amen.
Please stand with me for the pledge. Congratulations.
Now to special recognition, before we get, before we get started, I want to recognize Brother Andrew. Welcome to the board.
Thank you.
We're glad to have you and Melanie, and I think you'll be a great asset to the board.
I appreciate it.
Like, Ms. Riley's gonna start?
I think I'm gonna stand over here. I always get a bunch of camera. So we have a couple of students, like several staff. So we will start with our staff and our student of the month at primary in first grade is Ms. Paisley Wham. Paisley, you wanna come on up? And Paisley was nominated for being so sweet, having such a good attitude. She always follows the rules and works very hard in class. Congratulations. You wanna get closer? Are you ready? And can we get a picture with family real quick? You wanna stand with your family and we'll take a picture? Okay. Thank you. So, our student of the month at elementary is a student who was actually nominated last year as well. And so she has a really good reputation of always being positive and caring. And I reminded her that she got student of the month last year, and she wasn't too impressed with herself, but she was very happy because it's her birthday month. And so it is our fourth grade. I told her, don't take it for granted, okay? Never take it for granted. So we would love to take the time to recognize our teachers and staff. And we, we don't take it for granted because we always want to show how much we appreciate their hard work. And they go above and beyond every day. So our staff that was nominated at the primary school, she's not here, but it is Brandy Hammons. And Brandy Stubbs is our manager in our cafeteria at primary school. So she was nominated. And what was said about her, I wanna say it close to the quote, so you can hear all the good compliments, is that she just always goes above and beyond. She always willing to do the hard work, whatever it takes to get the job done. She just jumps in and she'll get in any role just to make sure that everything's taken care of for the kiddos. And our teacher of the month at primary is Mrs. Tracy Stone. And I know that this has been said about Mrs. Stone before, but it was the main reason that she was nominated, and it's her positive attitude. It's being positive, positive, positive. And she's in a new role this year. You would never know because she's just faced every challenge head on. And she's been willing to learn and grow and help us learn and grow and work with us, so. At the elementary, our staff of the month that was nominated was Mrs. Yastenia Alvaro, and she is actually celebrating her sister's birthday tonight. So she sends her apologies for not being here, but I always tell my staff family first and take care of yourselves. So Ms. Jessie was nominated for always willing to help out others, and she steps into any role we need her to at school. You know, all of our staff, they have one official title. But when they're willing to go above and beyond, I especially appreciate that because it makes my role a lot easier when I know I can lean on my staff. And our teacher of the month is Mrs. Jessica Wright. Mrs. Wright teaches for us in third grade. And she teaches math for us, so we are thrilled to recognize her. And she had several nominations, and it was kind of the same theme. She's just always willing to help students. She's always willing to help staff with what they need, especially technology issues. If you don't know Ms. Wright, she's a technology guru, and she usually knows every answer from Google. So our spreadsheets, we lean on her a lot for our spreadsheets. But we appreciate you because she's always willing to help, and she never says no. And she's always asking me what she can do to help me and always looking for ways to help I can just improve. Thank you, Sam.
High school.
And so at high school this time, we had three students that we wanted to recognize. Um, this month, um, was, has been a busy month because of homecoming and other things. So our campus has been really busy, but our kids have not slowed down. So that's a good thing. The first student that we wanted to recognize, and she's not here, and her name is Zulie Camarillo. And she is a senior this year. And Zulie is one of the leaders on our campus. She has really stepped up as far as being a mentor to our younger students on our campus. And she and another young lady have started a prayer group for the younger girls on our campus who don't feel like they can, you know, speak out in other groups. And so it has really grown. I think yesterday in our meeting, they had about thirty young ladies for lunch that were there, and they were doing an awesome job. So Zulie Camarillo is being recognized. Our, our next young man is Jamal Garland, and he's not here. But Jamal has grown tremendously just in the past year. We used to call him Speedy because he would run around everywhere and wouldn't slow down. But Jamal has really transformed this year into craving knowledge and wanting to learn and asking questions. And we can really tell in class that he is growing and learning. So Jamal Garland is the next. Our third student who is here tonight is Noah Morehead. And Noah has done an amazing job this year. And to quote one of his teachers, he has grown tremendously. And he not only wants to learn, he craves knowledge and craves the learning process. And he's become a wonderful leader, and he has just stepped up. And he is one of the most polite gentlemen that I have on campus this year. And so Noah is, he's showing out for us, and we really appreciate everything that he's done this year. Okay, and so, and we also like to recognize our teachers. And each month we like to recognize a para and a licensed teacher, licensed staff member. And this, this month, we'd like to recognize Ms. Kailene Hooks as our para. And Kailene is not here tonight. And she has done a wonderful job stepping in. She was a long-term sub for us last year. And this year she came on board as a para, and she has done an amazing job. She is a virtual Arkansas proctor in our school. She does anything that we ask. She is an amazing role model for our girls. And she can handle classroom management, do A.T. So Kailene is a wonderful addition to our campus, and so we'd like to recognize Kailene Hooks. Next young lady is not here tonight. And I just wanna say that she has totally transformed the way that special education is being recognized in our building. If you didn't know, that this year, the state has mandated that we do a lot of push-in for our special education students. So they're no longer pulled out and in their own classroom. They are included in an inclusive environment in our classroom settings. And so this person, Kristin Jester, her job is to be an additional help and assistance to those students and help them, not only help them, but help others in the class who are not able to understand the skill or who need that extra help. And quoting a teacher that she works with in her classroom, that she has totally changed the classroom dynamics in the way that all children, you know, are being helped by her just being there, with her being able to help those students who are struggling a little bit, but also helping them students who may have a question when that teacher is busy. So Kristin has been a wonderful addition to the high school campus, and we're so happy to have her. And she has done an amazing job for us, so Kristin Jester.
And I do have a recognition from Central Office, and I know she already knows. Because, I mean, when Madison walked in, that kind of ruined it for us. But if you don't know, Brittany Brady is the first person that anyone sees when they come in this building. She takes care of booking this room for events, for booking the auditorium for events. Anything that takes place in the district, she pretty much is the first one to know about it. She puts together our board packets every month to make sure that you guys have what you need. She helps set you up for any of the professional development continuing education that you have to have. Brittany does it all, and this office would not function without her. And I had a wonderful bosses celebration early today because we have to be at Dawson tomorrow. But I couldn't be a good boss if it wasn't for the people that I'm surrounded with. And it all starts with the face, the front face of Central Office. So we want to recognize Brittany Brady. You never know what we're gonna do. Well, yes, she does.
She stood next to them, Bonnie.
Yes.
She should learn if she gets dismissed after this.
That's all of our special recognitions, so.
The next item of business is executive session. We don't have anything, so we'll, we'll move along.
Yes, and if we're done with our special recognitions, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the board meeting. But if you've got places to go and people to see and things to do, you are welcome to leave at this time.
The next item of business is approval of the minutes for September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, and October first, twenty twenty-four.
Minutes as presented first September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, October first, twenty twenty-four.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same sign, that motion passed. The next item is a financial report. Rhonda, can you elaborate on any, anything we might need to know?
It's noted that our pending legal balance is down, that you pay the smaller members than you pay now. Type money is beginning to come in. My deposit is about four hundred and fifty-one thousand today. And so you should see when you give your check next month, so that you get it back up to what should be our normal what we normally carry as a legal balance.
Are there any questions? If not, can we approve this financial report?
I think I'm actually going to approve that financial report as presented.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same sign, that motion passed. Next item is our, part of our business, legal finance, consider agenda.
We have no board to board transfers.
No board to board transfers this month, so we'll just move along. The next item will be curriculum instruction, consider agenda. We have the GHS data report. Can you elaborate?
Coach Morrow has got information for you. Um, that's part of learns is that monthly they will be sharing data. And yes, we did get our Atlas test scores yesterday, but we have not had time to dive into them. So we did not want to present anything prematurely, but they have some good information from GHS to present to you.
So one is, I have, I have it by grade and by subject. For each content area, we've been given after class in June. And this is material that they're gonna see on the state assessment, but we try to keep the focus more towards what they're doing now. I have had teachers go and, and giving them new material in this process because I want them seeing those types of questions. So we have data, and for the math, performance ranges from twenty-six percent to thirty-five percent. Students performing well in math primarily on the standards that are being taught now. Areas they've been struggling with are past and future standards. So we know now with the math department, our focus needs to be the retention of information from previous years, and then just putting more of that information in front of them for what's to come. For E.L.A., performances from thirty-eight to ninety, or forty-nine percent, kind of the same across the board with all three content areas. Students are doing well with what they're being taught, but then as we're giving them previous information, it's getting them to dive back to that, dive deeper into that content material. And then moving over to the science, ranges from twenty-five percent to thirty-six percent. And with that ones, we have data for the seventh and eighth grade. So for them, same, same there, they're working on something now, and they're testing on that, and they're doing well. But then when they're presented newer material, and we want them to see how those problems are in Atlas, that's where they're struggling. So we have data that shows us what these kids need to be working on, and we're taking that, everything we have. And we have four hundred and thirteen Atlas classroom quizzes in the past three weeks. We're taking that, and these are the kids who are struggling, who we're gonna take to those enrichment Fridays and really work on bringing those students up. Any questions?
And they will be doing their interims next week at the high school for.
We do have interims every, every day next.
And we just, the state board only just approved the cut scores for last spring's Atlas test last Thursday. So that's why we're just now getting those scores to see where the kids are landing there. And we're going to, we've got a group going to Dawson tomorrow so that we can really dive into the test scores and see where our kids are and where we need to set that, that intentional structured intervention time.
And with this, more data we have, we have our first PLC Friday where we actually bring our teachers in together and just able to talk to them in individual groups. All this data is gonna be put in front of them with data from the summative assessments in the spring. And we're gonna have plans in place for each content area and how we're gonna help our students.
You know, with these classroom quizzes or these classroom assessments, it's just helping us find the focus skills that our students need. And what we're finding specifically in the seventh and eighth grade is that those students across the curriculum areas are needing the same focus. So this is a great opportunity when we go into our PLC meetings to meet with our teachers that, you know, our social studies teachers, our science teachers can all hit that same skill and use it cross-curricular because they will be seeing all of this in each test. So this is going to help us.
Do all the school districts start to practice this Atlas quiz?
Yes, I know they all have access to it now, whether or not they actually.
And that's the recommendation of the, basically of Department of Education, is that teachers are regularly using that classroom tool because it shows students what the structure of the Atlas test is going to be like, so they're familiar with it. It's not just about the information, but they need to be familiar with how the test is structured so they know how to take the test.
Basically, the teacher goes in, they select the standards that they taught, they create the test, but it's generated through the same type of questions that are on the Atlas summative. And this is an Arkansas test, you know, that's why Arkansas went to Atlas this year. It's because it's our test. So over time, you know, we encourage every teacher to access this piece because that gives us great data to use to know where our kids need to be in order to be prepared for the interim, and then in the long run, the summative as well. So we still have some that are a little iffy about the use of it, but our goal is to have one hundred percent of our students, our teachers using this classroom quiz this year throughout the year.
And it's good practice for our students because what we found was that on the majority of the questions are two and three parts. And if they miss one part of it, they're missing it all.
Everything's just great practice for them this year.
So how are, so you analyze this data, and then you're saying, like, I need to pull this, you know, Sally, whatever. You need to come in, and we need to work on this on this Friday. So how, like, how is that related to parents is like, will we, like, will parents get kind of like a week notification of like, so, I'm like, what is the month? Or in October? So like, say November, whatever is gonna be the Friday that we're, I don't know what our calendar says. But just, you know, like, so is there like a week warning of that? Like, because we're pulling this data, and those parents will know, so they'll know how to arrange transportation.
Yes, we have a, a spreadsheet that our teachers input their data of what students have not met those, mastered those particular skills. And so the, the students will receive a slip that says you have been invited or you, you have been nominated to come to enrichment Friday, whatever. And then we give them also a bus pass. So if they ride the bus, they will give their bus pass to their bus driver, so the bus driver knows to pick them up. But the slip goes home to the parents to let them know. We also have some teachers that contact the parents on Reminds, or they call them or send them emails to let them know that their students will need to come in, or, you know, are requested to come in on enrichment Friday. And so the spreadsheet is also shared with the Twenty First Century staff where it has the skill that they, they're needing practice on and any work that the teacher that likes to give for them to work or practice that skill. And so they are divided up into groups with the certified teachers who are teaching or tutoring that particular skill.
And when you say that's how elementary is as well, within the week?
Yeah, within the week, we send a letter home to parents and say, we kind of have a little bit of different system because we use Save the Children program. And so the kids who come throughout the week are also the kids that come on Fridays for that. And we just send the letter home, and the parents tell us if they're gonna be there or not. Some of them have other things, have work situations where the kids can't come. And so they say, yes, they'll be there, they're riding the bus, and we give the tickets to the bus driver on the Thursday before the Friday.
It's a lot of work.
And there is.
There is, I mean.
That's, that's another change with Atlas is there's going to be a parent portal so that parents can go in and access their students' specific results so that you can see, and you can read more on it and manipulate it and see where your student is lacking as well. Because it's trying to give the parents more information. You know, ACT Aspire always sent us those printouts that we send those home, or we have them at Parent Teacher Conference. This is a login that they will be able to log in and see those, every time one of those tests is, is administered, you'll be able to see the progress. And there is information that we are going to send out to parents, kind of like a tutorial on this is how you go in and access.
It's kind of, it could be a two-way communication tool.
Yes.
And that's also gonna help when we have students who we request to come to Friday enrichment who decide not to come to Friday enrichment and are not passing these skills and are not getting the grades that they need to get. Well, you know, the parents will know that, you know, we have requested that they come to get the enrichment.
Or so potentially they could log on, like, there's a situation where they can't come on Friday, they could log on from home to do, to do, to do more work. Thank you.
The next, next item is the director's report, Miss.
That's gonna be Wendy Shaper, who is our grant person for the district who filled out the massive application for that COBS grant and is administering all of that wonderful stuff.
So I'm here to talk to you about the community, community-oriented planning, school violence prevention program. They met three times, federal grant. So we met as a committee in April twenty twenty-four, so Ms. Wolf, Rhonda, Amanda, Jones, Victor, and myself to kind of establish priorities for our school safety. We utilized the A.D.E. school safety priority list and kind of looked at what we, the areas that we were strong in, the areas that we were weak in. And this was prior to me beginning to write the grant. And so at that point, we had identified having one district-wide working surveillance system with no, it's in the lighting. And finishing our electronic door access and then fencing the GHS, C.E.S., central office, the entire campus. All of those are straight from the A.D.E. safety priorities list. So as we learned more about how much funding was gonna be available, we added more onto our priority list, bollards for the entrance to see as to prevent a vehicle from driving into the school, a fire-rated double door for the band hall, touch bar, door egress hardware to replace crash bars. And I did not know what door egress hardware was before this, but now I know it's exit hardware. Walk-through metal detectors and then door prop alarm. So if the door's propped, there'll be an alarm that goes off to notify. Walk through metal detectors and then door prop alarm. So if the doors propped, there'll be an alarm that goes off to notify staff. We submitted the application in June. It was for four hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars of federal funding. And then the required school match would be a hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars. We found out in September that we were awarded partial funding. And it's a big deal because only twenty percent of schools nationwide were awarded any funding at all. So we're lucky to get what we've got. The amount that we were awarded is three hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-three dollars, but. And our required school match is a hundred and four thousand dollars, eight hundred and sixty. And they funded every priority except for our fencing. And the fencing was a big chunk. It was like a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And so every other priority that's listed on there is approved for the grant. The fencing is not approved. And we're just asking that you approve the project.
And when we went in, they didn't really give us any reasoning behind why they approved certain things or why they didn't approve anything. It was just, this was funded, this was funded, this was funded. No further explanation on anything, so.
So they didn't say why.
They didn't say why, no. It was just, here are all the things you asked for. This was approved, this was approved, this was approved, this was not.
They had been thinking that was such a big budget item and they, I mean, they have a limited amount of federal dollars to give out and so. You know, they may have been looking more at trying to fund more schools.
But that's still, I mean, that's a huge chunk of priority on things on this list. So that will, that will give us a big start on the things we need to get done. And I have also put in for some additional funds to do the rekeying of all the doors. In the G.H.S. building and the C.E.S. building at least, so.
Have, have you looked, is there grant possibilities that will include the possibility of a fence? I mean, we've talked about that. We, I mean, I think that's very fundamental.
Yeah, no. School safety is the hot subject right now and so. I would guess that there are gonna be other funding opportunities coming down the line because this is the third safety grant that we've gotten. We had the one that someone else wrote. Mr. Vining wrote it. We had the stronger connections that I wrote, which was federal money, but it was through the state. And then we have this one. They know that they, they put out these criminal justice institute, A.D.E. priorities. They know the schools don't have money. To put these priorities into place without grants. So I would guess that there are gonna be more coming down the line, but can I promise it? No.
Sure. Are there any more questions? Anybody? If not, we'll move on to the next item, which is future business.
Well, we need to make sure that you approve these, these projects now that it's listed out there. There needs to be motion to approve funding those projects.
Well, that's safe. We have a motion to approve that project.
And we approved the acceptance of the grant and the projects that presented.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same sign, that motion passed now. Go to future business. You have anything other than the.
Our next board meeting is supposed to be on the nineteenth and I know that. I've sent you all the information on the trainings that are coming up and if you are interested in those, contact Brittany. She takes care of that.
And I think, you know, Andrew, I think six hours is required every year for, you know.
New board members have to have nine.
Nine, okay.
Monday, the nineteenth and the other one that's an all-day deal.
In December.
But now the new members, do they have two years to get that nine?
No, they have to get it.
They have to get it the first year, okay. Well, there's no further questions, so can we move to adjourn? All right, we got.